It's not you.
Hello?
Hello, just to remind folks, if you are coming into the meeting, if you're on the phone, just try to hold the microphone away from your mouth so that we don't get any feedback. And then also, if you're on video, make sure that if you're not talking to please mute your mute your video so that we don't get any interruptions during the meeting. And I'll go over the whole spiel of how the meeting's going to work here in a little bit. We're going to wait a couple more minutes and we'll see. We got Cody here, I see Jeff Styles is here. We got quite the list going. Hey Jeff. That's all of the commissioners so far. Oh, there's Bruce. There's Philip. Dave. Were there, was there any planned absences for the meeting? Did staff know of any?
No, I don't see Mark Popoff connected.
Okay.
I'm on the phone right now.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Hello, Mark.
Mark, did you find a packet on your back steps?
Yes, I did.
I saw you working out on the Habitat home the other day, Mark.
Yeah, I think they're going to pour some concrete tomorrow.
Oh, nice. Well, maybe I'll get in touch once they start doing the roof of the meeting to learn how to do that.
I think the trusses are going to come next week sometime.
Okay. Okay, so it look, I mean, it looks like we have everyone, right? Am I right? We have Cody, Jeff, Bruce, Philip, welcome Philip. We also have Mark. Is there anyone that I'm missing?
Jeff Styles, he's here.
Yep. Okay. Well, it's 6:02. Let's get the meeting going. So I'll call it to order. First off, we'll start off with roll call.
Grant Bybee.
Here.
Cody Cornet.
I'm here.
Bruce LaBierre.
Sure.
Mark Popoff.
Here.
Jeff Styles.
Here.
And Philip Mosher.
Here.
Okay. And just a reminder, folks, that came in a little bit later, if you could mute your microphones so that we don't get any feedback. And I'll, I'll notify you if, if you wish to speak, I'll notify you that that it's time to unmute your microphone. And I'll, I'll go through the whole spiel for the meeting here in a minute. But okay, so we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Did anyone raise any issues from the past agenda or or from the current agenda? I don't hear any. Would anyone like to entertain a motion?
I'm motioned to approve the agenda, please.
Okay, so it's moved by Cody and seconded by Jeff. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. Okay, so next is approval of the minutes from the May 21st, 2020 hearing. Are there any issues that anyone wishes to bring up? I'm not hearing any. Okay, would anyone like to entertain a motion?
Have we approved the minute as presented?
I seconded that.
Okay, so it was moved by Bruce, seconded by Cody. All those in favor, raise your right hand, say aye.
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 Okay, it's unanimous. Right, was that you, Mark?
Yeah, I.
Okay. Okay, so now we move into the public comment portion of the hearing. Does anyone wish to provide public comment that is not in relation to the topics that are being heard tonight? So in regards to anything other than the application that's under review. And if you do, remember to unmute yourself and state your name and address. You folks, few more seconds. Okay, I am not hearing anything, so we'll move on. And we will move to the quasi judicial public hearing of appeal 030-20 of subdivision 74-19. Robert Bochum, Denise Dietrich Bochum, Gary Gingrich, Terry Joe Jester Gingrich and Damon Hewlett. Public hearing continued from May 21st, 2020. Let me get to. Okay. So now is the time specified for the planning commission to conduct the continuation of the public hearing to consider appeal number 030-20, an appeal of the administrative approval of subdivision 74-19. Due to ongoing COVID-19 health crisis, the ongoing COVID-19 health crisis, the city's public hearing procedures for tonight's quasi judicial hearing have been amended. On April 15th, 2020, the governor issued executive order number 20-16 titled Keep Government Working: Ordering Necessary Measures to Ensure Safe Public Meetings and Continued Operations by Local Governments During Coronavirus Outbreak. Pursuant to section 2A of the governor's order, public bodies must hold public hearings through an electronic means whenever possible. Also pursuant to section 2A of the governor's order, the public body must make available a method by which the public can listen to or virtually attend the public hearing at the time it occurs. Regarding public testimony, section 2C of the governor's order states, "Any requirements that any testimony during a public hearing be taken in person do not apply if the public body provides an opportunity for submission of testimony by electronic or virtual means or provides a means of submitting written testimony, including by email or other electronic methods, that the public body may consider in a timely manner." The governor's order is to remain in effect so long as Oregon's state of emergency due to COVID-19 is in effect. As of the date of this public hearing, Oregon's state of emergency remains in effect. Consistent with the governor's order, the city has implemented the following procedures for tonight's public hearing. This meeting is accessible to the public via Zoom and access instructions were provided in the agenda packet that was posted to the city's website on June 11th, 2020. The land use application and all related documents, as well as the applicable criteria, were also posted to the city's website for public viewing. All written testimony was timely posted to the city's website for public viewing and also transmitted to the planning commissioners so that the testimony can be considered in a timely manner. In addition to the written testimony received, the planning commission will be hearing live testimony tonight through Zoom. Procedures for providing live testimony at tonight's hearing are as follows. You must be recognized by the chair before providing testimony. The participants in tonight's hearing are currently muted and will be unmuted when called on by the chair. If you have logged into this meeting from your computer and you would like to testify, please raise your hand using the icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen. The chair will call on you either by your name or whatever designation appears on your Zoom screen. The city clerk will be assisting the chair throughout this process. If you're calling in from your home or cellphone, please wait until we have called on everyone that has logged in from their computers. Those who have joined using their phones will be asked if they wish to speak next. We ask everyone be respectful, limit background noise, and not talk over each other. You must state your name and address before you begin speaking. Please speak slowly. Everyone who wishes to speak will have five minutes. I think there was an extra. The commission chairperson shall limit a person's testimony to five minutes or less to the end that parties are encouraged to submit as much evidence as possible in writing prior to the hearing and the chairperson may exclude or limit cumulative, repetitious, or immaterial matter. Chairperson may allow additional time for testimony from an applicant and the principal opponent of an application. Okay. After I open the public hearing, we will hear from staff. After we hear from staff, we will ask the opponents if they wish to present testimony in favor of their appeal. We will then hear from the public. Finally, to honor the right of rebuttal, we will then ask staff if they wish any rebuttal. To expedite the hearing, the commission members may ask questions of persons as they testify. During the hearing, some important standards apply. First, those who testify must hold their testimony to the review criteria, which is detailed in staff's report and the notice of public hearing. The review criteria at issue in this appeal is the Dow's municipal code title 10, Land Use and Development, Article 9.040, subdivisions and major replats in Article 5.020, RH High Density Residential District. Second, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the commission members and the parties an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Do the commission, do the commissioners, staff, applicant, or opponents have any questions? And remember, if you do, unmute yourself. I'm not seeing anyone jump up.
Yes, I do have a question.
Okay.
A point and a question. I may choose to, if that's possible, I may choose to not provide a vote on a decision today if I feel like, as the newest member of the commission, I am not knowledgeable enough yet of the pretty complex matters that are being discussed here.
Okay.
Is that, okay, can I withhold a vote if I decide to do so?
Yes.
Okay, great. And then I also just, for the record, wanted to say that as a real estate professional, I think there is a potential for conflict of interest. I have not had any kind of business relationship with the developer or anybody else involved in this subdivision development, but it is of course possible that sometime in the future I would. So I just wanted to state that for the record.
For purposes of the record, there, there isn't any reason you feel tonight that you wouldn't be able to render an impartial vote on the matter. Should, should you choose not to abstain?
No, there isn't.
Okay. Was that, was that all, Philip?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So that kind of leads it perfectly into our next part. Let me get back to it real quick. Have any members of the commission had any ex parte contacts, conflicts of interest, or bias which would not allow them to render an impartial decision on this matter?
Oops, I guess I got ahead of myself.
No, that was perfect, perfect timing. I'm not, I'm seeing head shakes from Bruce, Jeff, Cody, Mark.
No, no, I don't have any conflict.
Okay, does anyone participating in tonight's hearing wish to challenge the qualifications of any members of the commission? And remember to unmute yourself. I'm not hearing anyone, I'll give it. Going once. Twice. Okay. Okay, so the continuance of the public hearing regarding appeal number 030-20 is now open. May we hear?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, good evening. I'd also like to welcome Mr. Mosher to the commission and much success to you in the future. Josh Chandler will be giving the presentation this evening. It's going to be a brief presentation, just a summary of the project. And if there's any questions after the end of that, then Mr. Chandler could respond to those and then Mr. Chair could open up the public comments. I just want to make sure that the planning commission has received the two pieces of correspondence that we received yesterday. One is from Landerholm, I believe that that's the firm that is representing the opponents. And the second correspondence is from H. Lee and Associates, an engineering firm. So I think you both have both of those this evening. We have that. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Chandler to begin the presentation.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, commissioners. Hopefully everybody can hear me. I was a little bit loud last time, I guess. I'm going to be sharing a PowerPoint with you guys this evening, so I'll be sharing it on your screen. If you're having any issues with the size, I believe you can toggle up in the right-hand corner to maybe adjust your screen size.
All right.
For those of us on a phone, you're going to have to explain what it is you're putting up on the screen.
Okay, will do. So as mentioned, this evening, we're discussing appeal number 030-20, which is the appeal of subdivision number 7419, Legacy Development Group. The opponents listed earlier, Robert and Denise Bochum, Gary and Terry Gingrich, Damon Hewlett, they're represented by Steve Morash. The property currently does not have an address assigned to it. The map and tax lot number, one north, 13 east, one C, back slot 201. The zoning designation is high density residential. Staff provided a brief history of the zoning designation for the property. And this most recent version of the staff report dated June 5th, we also provided narrative during the last planning commission meeting on May 21st. So therefore, we will not be discussing zoning history at this time. This is the location of the subject property on East the Dows. As you can see, Richmond Street to the east, East 10th Street to the north, 12th Street to the south. This is the property in relationship to the high density and low density boundaries within that area. The original project scope of subdivision 7419, it's a 6.92 acre parcel. Originally proposed, 73 parcels total, 72 of those are dwellings. One parcel is dedicated as a community park. Dwelling parcel sizes, 2,122 square feet to 6,095 square feet. All of those meet the minimum lot size for the RH zone, which is 1,500 square feet. The community park that's proposed is 5,654 square feet. With this project, there is a full street dedication of East 11th Street, bisecting a northern and southern block, if you will. This is a full street dedication. And then on the western boundary is Bradley Drive, which is a half-street dedication. As some clarification, Bradley Drive, you will see that the name changes to Bradley Street later on. This was a condition of approval of the subdivision for the postmaster to avoid any confusion with Bradley Drive that currently exists in Hood River County. There is alleyway access proposed for this subdivision, which means the intent is driveways and garages will be accessed on the rear of all lots. Excuse me. This is proposed dwelling types that were originally submitted to us. There is seen one and two level, single-family homes, detached, some duplexes, triplexes, accessory dwelling units. One thing to keep in mind that each of the attached dwellings are in fact divided by a property line. So not, there is not a single quote unquote multi-family building being proposed with this development. We provided a project timeline. This has been kind of a lengthy process, especially with the coronavirus going on. It kind of put a halt to a lot of things. So I just wanted to provide some project, the project timelines here. It was originally submitted January 10th, 2020. We had a notice of administrative action sent out on the 24th of January. And we felt the need to renotice it one week later. There was an error in the notice that came out in the Dow's Chronicle. So we felt the need to, to reach out and get the correct information out there. The administrative action was approved March 9th, 2020. The appeal was filed 10 days after. We have a 10-day appeal period and they filed in time on March 19th. The first staff report for the appeal was published May 11th. It went to a May 21st planning commission meeting. We all know it was continued to this evening. We published another staff report on June 5th. One thing I wanted to show here is that the applicant has, has been working with us on time. Due to the fact that the state has a strict 120-day land use deadline, there, there wasn't any provision with the coronavirus to add flexibility to those deadlines. So the applicant worked with us and assigned, assigned two separate 30-day extensions, which helped push this process along further, allowing for these meetings to take place. And a new deadline of July 21st is the current land use deadline for that. Next, I'll jump into the traffic impact study. This was issue that was raised. The fact that only a draft traffic impact study, traffic impact study was originally submitted. It is required as a condition of approval, number, number eight with the subdivision. It's also, when a development has, is creating 16 units or 400 daily trips, that's also required. This impact study was performed by DKS and Associates. The traffic counts were collected on January 9th. The preliminary study was submitted to the city on April 29th. After some discussions on the modifications that need to be made, the final draft was accepted by the city on June 10th. Study intersections of the traffic impact study were East 10th and Thompson Streets, East 12th and Thompson Streets, and then Old Dufa Road and Richmond Street. Some findings that came out of traffic impact study. We were able to take a look at the, the current level of service at each of these intersections. The city currently has standards of, an intersection has to meet a standard of load of service of D. We found, or DKS found level of service of all the subject intersections between an A and a B. Even with the projected development of 82 trips created, it still left each intersection at an A or a B. There was questions on, I'll go into it further, but there was questions on the accuracy of these counts. The discussion we had with DKS, they found a way to resolve that as they created something called a sensitivity analysis, which is an ability to manipulate these numbers and increase these numbers to try to find that threshold of when it will still meet city standards. And it actually, the traffic counts would have to be increased by 160% and they would all still meet city standards. Some site plan revisions that came from the traffic impact study. These are the two side by side, the original on your left and the revised on the right. Some big changes that you'll see, Bradley Street was moved from this corner to this location here. It's at the top of actual vertical curve. It was an issue that was raised, a safety concern, a something, a vertical curve or, or a blind hill, if you will. Also, the community park was moved from the center area of the northern block to, to the side of, you know, more toward the west. It doubled in size. Actually provide a little, this is the, the breakdown of the proposal side by side. As you can see, the revised version. There was a loss of three parcels, the community park doubled in size. And now the northern section of Bradley Street. park doubled in size, and now, the northern section of Bradley Street will actually be a full-street dedication for the city.
No.
And this is the neighborhood layout plan showing the two changes as well.
Hey, Josh. Sorry, I'm gonna interrupt you real quick. Hey, folks, anyone who doesn't have their mic muted, please mute your mic, so that we don't get any feedback during the presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chair. So now, we'll get into the appellants' arguments. 18 different arguments were raised. However, we, essentially, they all have common themes to them, so we decided to put them into these groupings for you. The first being airport safety. The appellants raised a concern that staff ignored airport safety when approving the subdivision. It was discovered that the noticing of the airport sponsor and the Department of Aviation did not occur with the original notice of application. However, noticing of the airport was not required, as the subject property is not within the approach surface of the airport. The property needs to be within the approach surface to warrant a noticing process. It was determined that it was definitely outside of the approach surface. Although as an additional level of caution, staff notified both the Department of Aviation in Oregon and Washington, as well as the airport manager on March 29th, 20 days before this meeting, and no objections or concerns to this development were raised. The next section, arguments 2, 3, 7, and 9, touch on missing individual parcel site plans. These arguments question how the city could approve this development if it can't be determined that the zoning requirements for each parcel are met. In a sense, this is leading to the fact that individual parcel site plans needed to be submitted for the city to determine various zoning requirements. As a reminder, the city is not reviewing dwellings at this time. The city will require that all future dwellings be approved, excuse me, be reviewed individually through a ministerial application process, reviewed both by the Community Development Department, as well as Public Works, to ensure compliance with landscaping, lock coverage, setbacks, parking, drive approaches, sidewalks. These are some things that were raised by the appellants. In addition, structural review has to go through Wasco County Building Codes. I did want to point out, though, that even, we're not reviewing them at this time, the applicants were aware when, seems to be aware, when they were plotting out their plan, they provided building envelopes that are consistent with setback requirements, driveway requirements. For example, each dwelling has at least a 20-foot rear yard setback, which is the minimum requirement of a driveway per our code, and it's consistent with the overall plan that has alleyway access and driveways in the rear of these lots. The next point that was raised was pedestrian connectivity. This has to do with the fact that the northern and southern blocks of the subdivision are so, are so long. You know, the appellants pointed out that they're nearly 700 feet, roughly, you know, they're at about 663 feet is the longest on the southern side, and to break these, break up pedestrian travel, staff will include as a condition of approval, and it also is consistent with our code, that the applicant provide a pedestrian bicycle path that bisects both northern and southern sections. So you'll take those almost 700-foot blocks, essentially cut them in half, so pedestrians can make it from East 10th Street all the way through to East 10th, excuse me, 10th to 12th, or vice versa. Now, back to the traffic impact study. As mentioned, there were some issues raised. The major issue raised was the fact that only a draft of the impact study was provided for the last meeting. As I discussed, a final study was accepted by the city on June 10th. Additional concerns of the impact study were raised in the manner at which it was performed. For instance, the choice of conducting traffic counts in the PM peak hours, the time of year when it happened in January, which the appellants believe does not provide an accurate depiction of these intersections. The study, however, followed the requirements of the Dallas policy for traffic impact studies, as well as the Institution of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual, which states that single-family homes generate 30% more traffic in the PM hours. So therefore, PM hours are used typically as the peak hour of a study. To address the timing of these counts, DKS all provided, also provided that sensitivity analysis that I briefly discussed, which showed that an increase of 160% would still have all three study intersections continue to operate with less delay than city standards. And as a reference for seasonal variation, ODOT recommends that these numbers should not be increased by more than 30%. So, this 160 is very, quite extensive, if you will. Since the study, the appellants have consulted their own traffic engineer who provided an analysis, not only of the study by DKS, but also into the city's transportation system plan. This information was submitted, as Steve mentioned earlier, yesterday afternoon, so staff has not thoroughly reviewed the information at this time. Staff would like to note that if additional discussion is needed on these arguments, both the city engineer and a representative from DKS are available this evening. The next items touch on missing engineered plans, meaning plans, so per the Dallas Municipal Code, construction drawings and specifications for public improvements are not required prior to subdivision application approval, but they are required prior to final subdivision plat approval. So therefore, preliminary plans, very common, were submitted with this application. This, you know, these arguments touch on differing, deferring engineered plan review to a non-public process, which does not afford the public, excuse me? These arguments touch on deferring plan review to a non-public process, which does not afford the public an opportunity to comment on the development's ability to provide public facilities. These facilities include ADA sidewalks, a proper stormwater system, and franchise utilities. The appellants state that there must be findings based on substantial evidence that the public facilities serving the subdivision are adequate or can be made adequate. One thing to keep in mind, the design of this subdivision was first discussed at a site team meeting on August 8th, with representatives from the city, county, Mid-Columbia Fire Rescue, Northwest Natural Gas, Northern Wasco County, PUD, and Q Life. This meeting determined the utility requirements and engineering standards for the level of service increased this development will incur. The development will be required to provide full utilities to each parcel, which will require the developer to extend main lines of water, sewer, and storm, to name a few, to the subject property to accommodate this development. The last group of arguments is the lack of required improvements that the city required of the developer, specifically off-site requirements. The appellants stated that sidewalks should be required along East 12th Street, all the way to Bradley Street. However, the specifics of that requirement were not included. Staff would assume, when discussing pedestrian connectivity, that this would mean connecting to the nearest existing sidewalk on each East 12th Street, which is a cluster of a couple sidewalks about 1,400 feet to the west. However, continuous sidewalks do not exist until the intersection of East 12th Street and Thompson Streets, which is 2,800 feet from Bradley Street. Staff would require additional clarification regarding the level of improvements being sop by the appellants. Staff notes that any improvement sop by the appellants must meet the essential nexus and rough proportionality tests set forth in Nolan versus the City of Tigard, and, excuse me, Dolan versus the City of Tigard, and Nolan versus the California Coastal Commission. Put into perspective, the developer will be installing about 3,500 feet of roadway improvements just within the development itself, so extending out 1,400 feet to the nearest set of sidewalks, that is 37% of what they will be installing. 2,800 feet is 75% of what they are already going to be installing. And their requirement, or the request to put in a sidewalk, it's not, not just as simple as saying, putting in sidewalks, this would actually require establishing curbs on both the north and south edges of East 12th Street right away. Currently, if you go out to East 12th Street, you see a paved strip of driving lane that's 20 to 24 feet of physical street pavement. East 12th Street right away is actually 60 feet wide. So to put in full city sidewalks up to city standards, the 26 to 30 feet of existing right-away obstructions that are seen out there, including fences, landscaping, sheds, walls, driveways, all of these would have to ultimately be removed in what people probably consider to be their front yard, which is very common in an undeveloped, in an area that has yet to develop to city standards. These obstructions aren't quite visible, and they are available on page 159. It kind of shows the detail of essentially a dead-end sidewalk that goes up against another development that has yet to put in sidewalks. As far as other off-street improvements, with the developer already putting in full sidewalks within the developments, they will also be required, and it has been included as a condition of approval, to install a sidewalk in front of the existing single-family home at 2845, which is part, essentially connected, it's kind of the little now landlocked piece of land that was part of the original minor partition that broke this lot off. You know, staff would also touch on the fact that, you know, the lack of improvements in the area, the sidewalk connectivity, it is pursuant to Oregon Bill 3479 from the 2013 regular session, which now restricts the city from requiring street improvements on minor partitions and one- and two-family development. Therefore, these requirements, you know, since this was signed in in 2013, the ability for the city to get these improvements from different minor partitions that have happened, we have been restricted from doing so. So therefore, there has been growing gaps in our infrastructure because of this House bill. It's a House bill that both the City of Portland and the City of Springfield opposed for the fact that they would degrade the city's ability for system capacity improvements, as well as create serious problems for the orderly administration of system development charges. These are the three additional conditions of approval that we'll add it. There was 23 originally with the subdivision, but these, I felt the need to point these out. As mentioned, a 24, that's talking about the pedestrian bicycle pathway that would cut the northern and southern blocks apart, create, it's a 10-foot wide path. Condition 25 is something that came about from the impact study, as well as concerns of this, this blind hill. And although all the parcels will be accessing driveways in the rear of the lots, as an additional safety precaution, the city will be restricting access within 200 feet on each side of Bradley Street in the event that someone in the future tries to propose a driveway that would then come on to 10th Street. This essentially will be deed recorded and not allow for that access to happen. And then also, as mentioned, the sidewalk to be installed in front of 2845 East 12th And then, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission move to direct staff to prepare a resolution denying the appeal and affirming staff's approval of subdivision number 7419. If, the other side is if the planning commission desires to grant the appeal, we would need to move to direct staff to prepare a resolution granting the appeal and overturning staff's decision. Planning commission, if they grant the appeal, would need to identify the specific criteria with which the application failed to meet, and the reasons why the criteria were not met. And that finishes up my presentation.
All right, thank you, Josh. Okay, let's get back to my agenda. Okay, so now, is that all from staff? Did staff have any more to add?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So next, we will hear from the appellants' attorney.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Well, my name is Steve Marash, and I'm an attorney with the Landerholm Law Firm here in Vancouver. Address 805 Broadway, Suite 1000, Vancouver, 98664. I'm licensed in both Oregon and Washington. I practiced out of downtown Portland with Schwab &amp; Williamson for about a dozen years, and I grew up in Vancouver. So, thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. There's obviously a lot of neighborhood concern about this proposed development, particularly with respect to the density. And while we understand that the zoning allows for density, our concern is that the other criteria in the code haven't been met. You know, Oregon has a long history of land use planning dating back to Senate Bill 100 and Tom McCall, and the very first goal that was adopted of the statewide planning goals was citizen involvement, and the courts have held that that means citizens are supposed to be involved in all stages of the land use planning process. Now, for subdivisions, we have what's called a two-stage process, and citizens are involved in the first stage, the preliminary or tentative plan approval. The final stage is where you get into engineering, and citizens are not allowed to be involved in that stage. And so, our concern is that on some of these issues, things that should be looked at at the preliminary or tentative plan stage have been sort of punted into the conditions. Now, I heard staff in the opening talk about preliminary engineering reports being submitted, but I did a public records request for all the documents, and I didn't see preliminary engineering reports, particularly a stormwater report, and I know stormwater is an issue that we've raised. And while we agree that the applicant at this stage doesn't need to do construction drawings, we do believe they need to do preliminary engineering reports to put together an evidentiary basis that they can actually meet the standard when they go to actually design it. And I don't see in the record any listing of the engineers' reports. I haven't received them that I'm aware of, and so I would encourage you to make sure that we do have those, and we have looked at them, and that they are available to the public. I also heard that building envelopes have been submitted, but again, I didn't get any building envelopes in response to my records request, other than, I got this, I hope you can see that, I think you've probably all seen it before. Maybe this is the building envelopes, but this document, it doesn't have any measurements on it, it doesn't show where the driveways are gonna be, and it doesn't have any calculations on it that these building envelopes do meet the 60% maximum coverage, which would include the driveways, and the driveways aren't on here. And so, we don't feel that there's been enough evidence on these types of issues to meet code, or to at least let the city make a determination that it's feasible or likely that the code could be met when they come with their final drawings, because that's what Lua has held. The city needs to make the determination at the preliminary stage that it's feasible or likely that the conditions can be met and that the code will be met. So, again, we're not asking for construction drawings, but we are asking for some preliminary engineering drawings, and I haven't seen those in the record. The same would apply to the cross slopes with the sidewalks, I mean, they're showing where they want the streets to go, and they know what the I mean, they're showing where they want the streets to go, and they know what the slopes are, but I haven't seen any evidence that they can meet the ADA requirements for sidewalks or curb ramps at the intersections in the subdivision. And that's an important issue because it's a requirement, but once the preliminary plat gets approved, then the streets are sort of locked in place, and the applicant can say, well, you can't make me change those now. So if there's an ADA slope issue, it needs to be looked at at this stage to know that it's feasible to meet those issues once you get into the final engineering. And again, we haven't seen the preliminary engineering drawings on this. Same issue for the physical constraints permit, which is raised in our material. Now... Pardon? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought someone was going to ask me a question. Staff mentioned this House bill that prevented the city from doing some improvements in the city, but because of these gaps, it's even more important for the city to look at whether or not it's appropriate to require the developer to pay for some additional off-site improvements. Otherwise, how are you going to ever get those? You're going to have to, you know, do an LID or something and make the local citizens pay for it. But if it's the development, this high-density development out in an area that doesn't currently have any high density, that's driving the need for the sidewalks to connect to town, then it's appropriate for the city to look at whether the developers should do something off-site. Staff mentioned Dolan, and I've litigated Dolan, I'll be the first to agree that Dolan applies here. But at the same time, Dolan requires a proportionality analysis be done where the city looks at impacts from adding, you know, eighty new houses on six-point-nine acres. What are those impacts on pedestrians, you know, going to downtown? And then what is the, you know, the sort of the impact on the developer of, you know, additional off-site sidewalks? And the courts have held those need to sort of roughly balance out. The test is rough proportionality. And so until the city's done some analysis of the proportionality, we don't see how they can rely on this Dolan to say, oh, we're not going to do anything. And so again, we feel like the application just, it hasn't met the requirements, and not enough work has been done on it to allow this type of highly-dense development in this location at the corner of town. And we don't believe it's met the code requirements for that reason. Now, moving on to probably the most important issue, which is safety. There was a traffic, there was a traffic study that was done right before the last meeting. So we got it like the day before the May eighteen meeting. And so as soon as we got that, I started looking for a traffic engineer that could review it. Now, we couldn't review it sooner because we didn't get it till May eighteen. And so now we have our traffic engineer that's responded to that. And he's found some significant safety problems. Number one, he's found some flaws in the way the study was done, in particular with respect to the density and the TSP itself. The TSP, although the property was zoned high-density maybe way back in ninety-four, in figure four dash one of the TSP, it anticipates this area to only have one, zero to one households per acre growth between two thousand and ten and two thousand and thirty-six. And so that's sort of an issue of, well, you know, how accurate is the TSP to begin with? And then looking at the intersections that were analyzed, although the code gives the city engineer the ability to sort of scope out what's going to be required in the impact study, the code's official policy on that, which is quoted in the Han Lee, H. Lee, report on page two, it says, "In certain situations, the city half-engineer will require a traffic impact study." Not, so that's mandatory, and that's when it could affect safety or there's identified deficiencies. And our engineer has gone through four intersections where he's identified deficiencies and safety issues. And they're listed in his report, and then he talks about another intersection at Old Duffer and Fremont that has the TSP points out bicycle safety issues at that intersection. And so these are intersections that haven't been addressed at all in the current traffic report. And so, you know, maybe the hundred-and-sixty percent increase on the three intersections that were studied, maybe that's enough to offset the January nine, you know, week after Christmas, middle of winter counts. But the study doesn't look at these other four intersections at all. And in particular, the Highway one ninety-seven Fremont intersection, which according to the TSP exceeds the critical crash rate of ODOT, which makes it a safety problem. And we don't, or not just we, but our engineer says the queuing analysis that was done of that intersection isn't sufficient to address the safety issue. Our engineer is recommending a full analysis of that intersection because of the safety issue. And because of the city's policy that the city will require a traffic impact study to address any known safety or capacity issue, we believe this can't be approved until that's addressed. And so for those reasons, we're recommending denial on this record. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hi, question, Isles, Commissioner. You talked about the traffic study, but you didn't bring up the part about number of houses per acre being revised to five per acre on that study.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay, I'm trying to bring it up here. For the TSP study, it says that with the eighty housing units, that's approximately eleven-point-five-six housing units per acre, where the current regulation would say five houses per acre would be... Would be advised.
Yeah, so that's twice as many. And in table, or figure four-point-one in the TSP, anticipates only zero to one additional households per acre in this area.
I was just surprised that you didn't bring that up, since that seems very important and controversial on this topic.
Well, that, yeah, there's a lot here, and I'm trying to summarize for you, but I would have, yeah, look at that issue too. I mean, if it's twice what's advised, I mean, that's twice as much traffic than that would be allowed otherwise. So that's one more reason to deny it. But I think the safety issues are pretty compelling as well.
Okay, did any of the other commissioners have questions for the appellant? Cody?
Yeah, I have a question.
Okay.
So just, you know, reviewing this and denying the application as it is, what do you suggest that the applicant should do differently? To, and I'm just focusing specifically on the traffic impact study and what can be done. What do you suggest that the applicant should do differently?
I think they should address these other intersections that our engineer has pointed out that haven't been studied, and I think they should be fully addressed. I think they also should address this bicycle safety issue that our engineer has pointed out at the Old Duffer and Fremont intersection, and they should look at safety of sidewalks going, you know, to the west, which I don't know that anybody's really looked at that, or at least haven't provided any analysis for the record of why they think that it's safe for people to walk west or not.
Okay, and then continuing on that, you know, there is developable land around this. You know, around this high-density area, there's low density, which can be, you know, further subdivided and minor partitioned into more lots and increasing houses, and thus increasing traffic in that area. Where can you or would you, and this is an appropriate question for you, where do you delineate the traffic impact study and the improvements required or requested there within to be put on this applicant as opposed to for the applicants of the future? That is to say, why do these things need to happen now to this person, this applicant, as opposed to maybe the, you know, next one to twenty people who decide to build an individual home on those other lots?
A good question, recently, and I think my response would be that if the applicant had looked at some of these issues in a little more detail, for instance, the sidewalks, then the applicant might say, hey, in this area, this is fully built out with old historic development, not likely to redevelop. And but over here, this is likely to redevelop because it's undeveloped or underdeveloped. And so here, we shouldn't be required to put the sidewalks because it's undeveloped or underdeveloped and is likely to redevelop. But over here, maybe we can put sidewalks in this area that's not likely to redevelop, or some type of analysis like that. It just, there's nothing about any of that in the record. And so that's our, it's not up to the neighbors to come and design the sidewalks and make sure they're safe. It's up to the applicant to show, you know, how everything is going to work. And if the applicant thinks it's not reasonable to make me do the whole direction, you know, they can explain why, but we haven't heard anything in detail. We just say, well, it's Dolan, so they don't have to do anything.
Okay. That's all I got for now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Cody. Bruce, did you have anything, any questions? Seeing head shake, no. Philip, did you have any questions?
I do.
Okay.
And my question is, so ultimately, are you in support of this development and want to make sure that the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted? Or are you ultimately against the development in general and are pointing out why you are so that with the ultimate goal to have the development as it stands denied?
Good question. And when you say you, I assume you're referring to my clients, because I don't have a personal...
Your clients, yes.
I believe that my client's concern is not with the property being subdivided, but with the super-high density being proposed here. And I think what they would like to see is something that didn't have as much density because then it wouldn't have as much impact as what we're talking about. However, the applicant, you know, it's zoned for this density, so they've got the right to develop it at this density if they meet all of these other code criteria that we're discussing. And so our position is that if the applicant wants to do this really high density, they need to meet all the requirements. And if they end up meeting all the requirements, then, you know, we may not be happy about it. There may not be anything we can do about it. But right now, they haven't met the requirements. And so our clients are going to make sure that they do meet the requirements if they want to develop to this high density. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does, thank you. All right, thank you, Philip. Mark, did you have any questions?
Not right now, no.
Okay, so hold off. So since all the commissioners have asked questions, I don't have any questions at this time. Now we will hear from the public. Thank you very much for your presentation. If you have previously provided testimony and you don't have any new testimony to provide, we ask that you please refrain from testifying at tonight's hearing. As explained at the beginning of the hearing, we will first call on those individuals who have accessed tonight's meeting from their computers and have their hands raised through Zoom. A reminder, there is an icon at the bottom of your Zoom screen that allows you to raise your hand. Please state your name and address before you speak. Please speak slowly. Now we will take testimony from those people that have called, or no, sorry, we're going to start with folks who are on Zoom right now. So if there's anyone that wishes to provide testimony that didn't provide testimony last time, or it's not same testimony from last time, now is your time to speak. And so I see a hand kind of half-raised down there at the Murray's.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just have one question with...
Sorry, state both your names and addresses.
Steve Murray, twenty-six forty-five East Eleventh Street, the Dells. And my wife Karen Murray at the same address. I have one question concerning the stormwater drainage. And if they put a stormwater drainage system in this development, where does that stormwater eventually go? I don't believe there's any current development or infrastructure to take that water from this particular development anywhere except for just to dump it in the ditches alongside the road. Does anybody have an answer to that question?
I could probably pitch this to Dale McCabe, the city engineer. He can touch on where it's located, what was discussed. And our findings was water, sewer, and storm would all have to be, main lines would all have to be extended to the development. So I am assuming that extension, Dale, you can cover for me, would be extended to our stormwater system.
Yes, we currently have a stormwater system at the Old Duffer Fremont intersection. And so it would have to be extended from Old Duffer and Fremont up Richmond Street up to the development and stormwater and installed within the development and tied into that system that would be extended up the hill.
Okay, and then the follow-up on that is who's going to pay for that?
The developer.
All right.
Was that all you folks had?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to provide testimony? Feel free to either raise your hand through the app or unmute yourself and get our attention.
Hi, yeah, my name's Cody, I'm at thirty-nineteen Fremont in the Dells.
Can you state your last name too, sorry?
Yeah, Cody Salee. I just moved into thirty-nineteen Fremont, and I know that there is a sewer main that runs through an easement on my property. I'm just wondering if that'll need to be accessed for this particular development or if it's separate from another main that might run down Fremont.
I'll go ahead and answer that again, Josh. There's currently a sanitary sewer that is down at Old Duffer and Fremont. And Cody's right, it does go through the eastern edge of that parcel down over the hill, down to one ninety-seven. But that sewer line is also currently running up Richmond Street to a certain point, getting near the intersection of Tenth and Richmond. So they'll be connecting onto the sanitary sewer at Tenth and Richmond and extending from that point to within the development to pick up the sanitary sewers for that development. So there won't be any new line or work going on that line that's in that easement that's going down over the hill to one ninety-seven.
Okay, perfect, that's all I wanted to know. All right, thank you, Cody. Okay, is there anyone else that wishes to provide testimony? Feel free to unmute yourself or raise your hand to get our attention. Staff, has anyone raised their hand through the app? I see, is that Mr. Gingrich raising his hand there?
Yeah, it's me. I just wanted to call everyone's attention.
All right, state your name and address for the record.
Okay, sorry. I'm Gary Gingrich, I live at twenty... I live at 2835 East 10th, been here for 30 years. And I would like to just add a comment on the traffic safety thing that I think probably keeps not being mentioned, and I would really like to, to highlight this. It's in the report to some extent. The intersection of 10th Street with Old Doofert Road and Thompson is, in the traffic reports consistently, one of those streets is left out of the traffic report. But traffic off all of those streets intersects there, it's extremely hazardous already, and any additional traffic on that is going to cost somebody physically. So that, that needs to be stressed. And as you look at the traffic report, whatever you think of the rest of it, please pay attention to that. So far, and in response to you, Mr. Mushar, as a, as an appellant, yes, it would have been nice to have Cherry Archards here forever, but we all recognize that, that we have to have progress and things need to be done in an orderly way. And that is the sole, the sole purpose of the, is all of us up here want to enhance the quality of this neighborhood for not only ourselves, but the people who are going to move here. And we really are concerned about the safety of the structure.
All right. Lexi Stickel, can you please mute your microphone? Sorry, go ahead.
You know, that's, that's really, there's a lot more I could say, but that's probably all the useful stuff. So, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. We appreciate you providing comment. Is there anyone else that wishes to provide comments? Sorry, I want to get back to my gallery view so I can see if anyone raises their hand or unmutes. If you wish to speak, please unmute yourself and make yourself known. Want to get it going? Going and gone. Okay. So now we will take testimony from those people that have called in. Please do not talk over one of, one another. But is there anyone that called into the meeting that would like to provide testimony? I see a couple numbers there. One ending 0096, another one 8316. Also 831, or yeah, I think those are the only two. And I don't hear anyone jumping up to provide testimony. Okay, so we'll move on. Is there any rebuttal from staff?
I, I just to clarify, I don't necessarily have rebuttal, but I did want to clarify, Mr. Morris's reference to this two-part, two-part process and goal one, which is about citizen involvement. The question for the commission tonight, I think this is a holding that actually Mr. Morris referenced in his correspondence yesterday, my RV City of Portland. The issue there is whether or not the petitioners are being afforded the opportunity to be heard on the issues that they are entitled to be heard on and whether there is substantial evidence in the record to support those issues. So that's really the question for the commission tonight. Based on the evidence in the record, is there substantial evidence to support the issues such that the conditions of approval can be complied with in that second stage of that two-step review process? I just wanted to circle back to that holding. If, if the, if the commission were to find that there is substantial evidence in the record to evidence that the conditions of approval can be complied with, there is no, the public then has been afforded the opportunity to be heard would be just a clarification of that two-step process. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from staff?
Josh or Dale, do you have any, any responses to any of the comments this evening?
No, I do not.
Yeah, I don't really have anything to add right at the moment.
Okay. So.
I just have some general comments on the, this is Mark. I just have some general comments on, on the development. Stormwater disposal is a concern. We don't do anything to treat the stormwater runoff. And I would like to see, instead of tying into the existing city stormwater system and dumping even more pollutants into the nearest stream as to require them to have disposal or require disposal of stormwater on-site, they can use bioswales or some other means of doing that. That would probably actually lower his development costs, although we might have to remove some of the lots. Let's see, I had a question about sidewalks, but that's already been answered. I think instead of requiring full sidewalk and, and curb developments from, from this project to the nearest existing ones, I think that designated bike lane might be more useful. I don't think there are going to be that many people walking from this development all the way into downtown, but there's probably going to be some kids riding their bikes to dry hall of school. So I would like to see some bike lanes put in instead of the sidewalks. That would just basically involve, you know, paving the shoulders on existing roads. So that's really the only comments I have on it.
Okay, thank you, Mark. Okay, is there any, we heard from staff, any rebuttal from staff? So now we are going to close the hearing. And it's now time for the commission to deliberate. So does the commission have any points they'd like to bring up or chat about?
I do. And this is Philip.
Okay.
Just to try and focus the discussion and.
Hey, Mark, if you could hold the microphone away from your mouth a little bit, we're getting a little bit of feedback. Thank you.
Just to focus the discussion and the decision-making process, I would love it if the appellant could, in as few words as possible, restate what it is they want to see in terms of studies or revisions or whatever being done to answer to the requirements. I really appreciated your statement, Mr. Gingrich, that you do understand and support the fact that we will need to move towards greater urban density within the city limits. And I agree with that. And I also understand and agree with the fact that when it's done, and especially when it's done at this density, it needs to be done right. There is great potential to take missteps. So I would just, and again, I'm new to this, so I'm still trying to wrap my head around a lot of pretty complex issues. So if somebody could help me just summarize in, in very few bullet points, what is it that you want to see being done to fulfill the requirements as you see them?
First off, at this point, once the meeting has, the public portion of the meeting has been closed, you can't address this to the audience or to the people that have been testifying.
Okay.
I hear, I think you have, you have a valid question though, but we would have to basically turn their meeting back on and open it back up.
Well, and I think you brought up the point earlier, Philip, that, you know, having, this being your first meeting and not very much time to go through the material, typically before a hearing, you know, that's the time that we're allotted to go through all of these materials and see what the points of appellate or of what the applicant is. And it was discussed earlier too, that, you know, if you don't feel comfortable making a decision on this, you have that option as well.
Okay, thank you.
Cody, did you have anything?
Yeah, I just, yeah. Actually, if someone else is going, I'm still kind of collecting my thoughts here.
Okay. Jeff, did you have anything?
Yeah, I am concerned about the 60% max coverage for the rainwater to seep into the ground and the fact that the driveways weren't on the maps and, and that doesn't seem like the diagrams are far enough along for us to make a proper decision on this. I also agree that safety is a concern and sidewalks, especially going down 10th Street, which is very steep, or bike lanes, as Mark was saying, gets to be also a danger issue. I would have loved to ride that as a kid because it'd be a lot of fun and exhilarating, but I don't know if it's all that safe to do it that way. But having the option to walk down those streets on a sidewalk with, without contending with the cars makes a lot of sense to me. So it's also the ambiance of the DOWs. We're not Portland. I haven't talked to anybody who lives here that wants to be anything like Portland. And I want to make sure that we're not turning into Portland just because the state is saying you must build a lot of property. So that's my concern.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Bruce, did you have anything?
I think I already opened my mouth. No, I don't. Thank you.
Mark, did you have anything other, you raised a couple issues earlier. Did you have anything else you wanted to discuss?
There was one other thing. Considering, you know, the traffic study, I think something needs to be done about the Fremont Highway 197 intersection before we allow any more major developments of this sort. It's apparently already in failure mode. There are too many accidents there. So something needs to be done about that. I think that this development might be a little ahead of its time. Maybe the developer might want to back off and maybe, you know, just divide this into a half acre or quarter acre lots. They can still be re-subdivided at a, at a later date as the infrastructure is, and in particular, the intersection at 197 has been improved.
Sorry, thank you. Broke my own rule. Cody, did you have time to noodle on that?
Yeah, yeah, I did. I did. I do, so just overall, you know, the overall project, I, I mean, I think, you know, we all know the Dallas needs more houses. And I'm glad that someone is taking advantage of the opportunity that the applicant is taking advantage of the opportunity to, to do that. I think it's a huge opportunity for him. I think it's a huge opportunity for future homeowners. That being said, this is a large development and it's in a place where we, you know, it's in a place that doesn't have that kind of density. As the attorney for the appellant stated, you know, the developer does have the right absolutely to develop the high-density, those high-density residential lots to their fullest and maximum. That being said, for the people and the community, I would like to see more preliminary work done on what's being presented to us before we make a decision on how this proceeds. The reason that I would like that is, one part of it is just for the community so they know what is going to be built there. And that includes everything from, you know, the stormwater drainage that we talked about, the engineering, the building envelopes, which are, there are small blue dashlines on the, the little colorful map. So you can see where there are, but maybe just a little bit more, a little more description, a little bit more clarity on like what this, what this is going to be so that we can narrow down, fine-tune our questions for the developer and make this a little better. I just want to see more preliminary work before we move on. The second part of that, of, you know, asking for more preliminary work in regards to the traffic study, engineering the sidewalks, the building envelopes, all that stuff is that I would rather get everything hashed out and dialed in so that when the developer is ready to go and, you know, the money's down and the equipment's out there, he can just wall and get it done. And that way, we don't have to do this in the middle of the project, have discussions and, you know, then we have a half-built subdivision that we are backtracking or need to make adjustments on that, that we should have probably taken care of at the beginning. I don't want to be, you know, I don't, me, I don't, the community, I don't want the developer to be put in a pickle and be locked up for a certain amount of time for things that we should have been more diligent on in the beginning.
This is Mark again. I would second that. And also, I have a question. Is the developer going to actually build these houses or is this just a concept plan?
I can speak to that. This is Josh Chandler. They are in fact the developer and the builder of the homes. Legacy Development does the land development and then Curtis Homes will provide the construction of the buildings on the site.
Okay, thanks.
I think Diana, you got something?
Yes, we've had a request from Lacy from DKS. She, she, she has commented if the commission would consider reopening the hearing.
I'm guessing, was it, was there an issue earlier with her being able to respond or is it, how does staff feel about this?
Mr. Chair, DKS is the traffic consultant firm that prepared the traffic study for the applicants. And there were questions that were raised by commission members specifically on the traffic study itself. So if you like, you have the author of that study here, the representative from that firm that perhaps addressed those questions that the commissioners have raised.
Well, and I'm thinking that if we do that, if we open back up the hearing, then we need to offer the opportunity to everyone else as well, not just DKS.
That's correct.
Just to not show favor. So how do the commissioners feel about that?
I would like to hear from them.
Okay. Jeff, Cody?
Um, sure.
Do you need a? Do you need a, do you need a motion from us, staff?
Motion, yes.
Okay, so if someone would like to entertain that motion, we can open up the public hearing for comments again.
A motion to open up the public hearing for comment.
I second that.
Those motion by Philip and seconded by Cody. All those in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
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 And.
Mr. Mushard, did you vote?
Yes, I did. Aye, thank. Okay, those unanimous. Okay, so the public hearing is now open. I don't think I'm going to go through the whole script again and remind you of the rules. I already read that. I'm not going to bore everyone to death. So you know the rules. If anyone has any public testimony, we'll start with DKS and then from there I'll open it up to everyone else. So if DKS would like to open up?
Hi, yeah, this is Lacy Brown with DKS Associates out of Salem, 117 Commercial Street, Southeast, Suite 310. I guess my question, are there specific questions that the commission is interested in hearing a response to or just address the appelleants' arguments in general?
This is Commissioner Stiles. I had brought up the question that was brought in the report about the five properties per acre. Eighty for the seven acres that we're talking about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure what number that's referencing with that. I was trying to find what you were referring to as well.
Okay, I'll mute and I'll.
Looks like he's tracking it down.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Brown, we had a comment from Commissioner Popoff stating that the Fremont Highway 197 intersection is failing or needs improvements. Can you speak to that intersection?
Yeah, so the Fremont US 197 intersection in the transportation system plan that was completed in 2017, it did suggest that the critical, or that the crash rate at that intersection exceeded the critical crash rate, which is kind of a statewide threshold that ODOT publishes to kind of give you a benchmark as to whether there's more or less crashes than you would expect. In my professional opinion, that intersection was not evaluated properly in the TSP. It was evaluated against urban critical crash rates and there's really nothing about that intersection that presents as urban, aside from the fact that it's within the city limits. And so if you compare it to the rural intersection crash rate, which I think is much more appropriate, it does not exceed a critical crash rate for that intersection, which is why we did not look at that intersection. We also did not study it because it did not meet the requirements in ODOT's Development Review Guidelines to warrant study of that intersection based on traffic volume that would be generated by the development and added to that intersection.
Thank you.
A practical standpoint, on the other hand, having driven that intersection for close to 33 years commuting to and from work, it's a tricky one and when, if you get into a mess, it is a mess.
Absolutely, yes. I'm definitely not saying it is not a tricky intersection, as you mentioned. I will point out that in the TSP, there are several projects that are recommended for consideration at that intersection. All of them are significant. There really is no easy fix, aside from completely reconstructing the intersection or closing off the side street approaches to that intersection or something of that nature, which is not obviously in line with the level of development that's being proposed here. And unfortunately, who I would love this to be a case, there is not currently a way like we do with traffic, traffic volumes. There's not a way to assign a metric of safety impacts that can be converted to a proportionate share. So there is no agency that I know of in the state that has a method to evaluate the increased potential in safety and convert that to, for example, proportionate share fees. So that's something to consider as well, if there is a safety concern there and it's not reasonable to assume that the developer would put in the $2 million J-turn intersection improvement. What is the, what is a reasonable request?
Lacy, I'm back. This is Commissioner Stiles. In the document that you provided, it's under the land use density where it talks about 11.56 housing units per acre as what this project is asking for with 80 units. And then further downwards says TSP growth assumptions as compared to the development proposal. The, it says, project site is shown to have a change in households per acre between one and five. The proposed development of 80 housing on 6.89 acres yields a proposed change in household per acre of 11.6. Is over double what was assumed to develop in city travel demand model for the city's TSP.
Yes, I, yeah, I see what you're referencing now. And yes, this was the letter provided by the appellant traffic engineer who reviewed the study. And my response to that is simply that the, I don't know why the transportation system plan evaluated that type of density with, for this particular parcel or for the travel demand model in particular. But the zoning that's proposed is consistent, or the development that's proposed is consistent with the zoning. So I don't think that the TSP assumptions and their analysis has any bearing on this in particular.
Okay. Did the commissioners have any other questions for Lacy? No from Cody. Bruce, do you have any questions? No. Mark, did you have any questions?
Um, no.
Okay. Okay, and was there anything else you wanted to, any other information you wanted to provide, Lacy?
Yeah, I'll just, one final note just on the study area. I know there's been questions about why we studied the intersections that we did. And I think it's important to note that there's deficiencies and there's, for both safety and operations all across the city. And so it's not simply a factor that there's an intersection with a deficiency that should be evaluated, but it's, that's why the city staff weighs in and decides whether the amount of traffic that was generating and that was adding to the specific locations, whether that combined with the existing deficiencies warrants analysis. And so we did coordinate with city staff and ODOT review guidelines to determine that study area and it was approved by the city.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, so to forward everyone else the opportunity as well, we'll open it up to other folks if they wish to provide testimony. I saw Mr. Gingrich raise his hand there for a second. Did you have something you'd like to add? So I remember to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
This, I'm Gary Gingrich. I live at 2835 East 10th. Lacy, you know, it's nice that we got to hear from you late in the meeting after everyone had already made their statements. I'm not sure I understand your logic, which seems quite circular, which is to say that, that because there are deficiencies at multiple other locations in the city, that it's okay to put a high-density group of homes upstream from these deficient intersections simply because there are others. Why should we compound the problem or did your study suggest that we do that?
Am I allowed to respond directly? Sorry, I don't know what the process is.
Yes.
Sorry, I was not implying that because there's other issues in the city that we didn't look at the nearby intersections. I was simply stating that just because there's an issue does not require us to study that intersection because the volume of traffic that we may be adding to that location, combined with the type of issue that may exist, doesn't always necessarily warrant a further evaluation. So if there was, you know, like I said, there might be a handful of vehicles that travel to various destinations throughout the city and we don't study all of those intersections as well. It's up to kind of the city staff in conjunction with the previous findings of other studies that helps us decide where we should actually focus our analysis.
Could I just ask one follow-up? Lacy, at the, at the intersection of Old Duffer Road, 10th Street and Thompson Street, did your study actually include traffic on all three of those streets? And did it account, did it account for traffic incoming to Mid-Columbia Medical Center on Old Duffer Road to Thompson at that time of day when you checked it in January?
I can't speak to that specific development and whether it was in operation. Can you provide more context to that?
I, one of the main reasons I ride my bike to work is to avoid that intersection. It has obstructed lines of sight along two intersecting routes, no matter how you approach it. It's very difficult for me to see that a traffic safety study for this proposed development could omit serious comment on that intersection. And I think that's probably true for everyone who drives that. We just don't understand that.
Okay. Yes, we did look at that intersection. We did look at all legs of that intersection and accounted for traffic at all legs of that intersection. In our report, we did, we did simplify the name of it just to make things easier to read and refer just to the Thompson lane, but it did include all the legs at that intersection. And we did look at the safety performance of that intersection historically and there have been no reported crashes during the five years of most recent available data. So we have no, no historical data to show a safety risk at that intersection as it is right now.
Mr. Commissioners, I'll stop in a second, but I, I'm just going to address you directly as, as one of your citizens. I know you've all driven that intersection. I invite you, if you have not, to, to drive that intersection from 10th Street and do it two or three times and assess, make your own assessment of whether we ought to put more traffic on there.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gingrich. Okay, I see a hand from the Murrays. Feel free to unmute yourself and state your names and address for the record.
Karen Murray, 2645 East 11th Street. And I just have a question and I'm not sure who this goes to, maybe Josh. We're talking 69 dwelling units. Is that correct with the plan? Is that was, the 82 was revised to 69, right? And I'm just trying to figure out what's a reasonable number of cars that would be involved in, that would add to the traffic, not all at once, but I mean, would 100 cars be a minimum that we'd be talking about 69? They wouldn't all have two cars, but maybe half of them would have two cars. So 69 plus 35, 104 cars being added to the neighborhood in some regard, parking, traffic, intersections, is that fair to assume?
I can't speak to the amount of cars on the development or that would be at the development. The information that we have that was provided by DKS was the amount of trips at peak hour. That's what we can go by. I wouldn't be able to comment on the physical number of cars at that development.
But there would be 69 dwelling units, right?
Dwelling parcels, so there's a bit, there's a difference there. So the dwelling parcels, those are the actual parcels the dwellings will be built on. Some of these dwellings happen to have single-family homes with an ADU on the property. So yeah, I think it's 11, so I think 80, 80 dwelling units.
So 80 plus maybe another 40, so maybe between 100 and 120 more vehicles potentially might be a realistic number. I'm just trying to figure it out.
Yeah, and like I said, I can't provide comment on that.
Steve Murray, 2645 East 11th Street, the DOWS. When I read the original DKS traffic study, it was done between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, which in Portland, maybe the rush hour in the DOWS, we have significantly more traffic between 3:00 and 4:30 when school gets out, when shift changes at MCMC, that the time they pick for peak traffic is not the time at which peak traffic actually occurs.
And I, I can respond a little bit and Dale, you might be able to help me out some more, possibly Lacy. The peak hour was decided on the policy for traffic impact studies for the city of the DOWS. It recommends using peak hour, PM peak hour. It's also listed in ITE's Trip Generation Manual, which is a widely-used transportation manual for calculating love, exactly what they're calculating. I would have to let Dale respond, but what it essentially points to is they found single-family homes typically have 30% more traffic generated in PM hours. That is why our traffic impact study policies say to use PM peak hour. Granted, yes, there are areas where it may not exactly fit, but this is, as mentioned, the, the ITE manual that engineers everywhere essentially go by.
Okay. I constantly hear people east of the mountains complain about Salem and the Portland area not understanding what goes on east of the mountains. And this particular traffic study seems to ignore the reality of the local roads that they're studying and, and going off of a manual that's very general and doesn't necessarily apply to the local conditions. I think we ought to deal with the local conditions.
Yeah, and unfortunately, we do not have a trip generation manual specifically for the city of the DOWS.
So. I understand that, but to me, a thorough traffic study, there ought to be those cords across the road and they ought to stay there for more than a couple of hours to, to come up with legitimate traffic study that this is, you know, an hour or an hour and a half. And then going to the manual doesn't seem to me to really be a thorough traffic study. And the response from the, the second traffic study or the analysis of the traffic study, I think, helps point that out. I know when I head down Brewery Grade and hit the traffic circle, I run into way more traffic at 3:30 than I will at 5:00.
Yeah, so Dale, would you like to provide any more comment? Or Mr. Murray, do you, would you like some more response on it that the city engineer may be able to provide?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from the city engineer.
Okay, this is Dale. You know, we have worked with, well, whenever a development comes in, I kind of explained this at the last hearing, whenever a development comes in and they're required to do a traffic study, we hand out that policy that we have developed for, the exact verbiage of it is the City of the DOWS Policy for Traffic Impact Analysis. In there, we do. In there, we do talk about the requirement for the the peak hour traffic. And it is that we look at using that PM peak hour time from that 4:00 to 6:00, 6:00 PM. And we also look at what intersections need to be analyzed that are near the development and where the traffic's going to be going to. So like in this, in this instance, for this development, um, most of the traffic is going to go to the collector streets. And so that those collector intersections that are closest to this development was 12th and Thompson. The traffic going down 12th Street is going to go down to 12th and Thompson, which is a both 12th Street is a minor collector street, Thompson Street is a major collector street, and then also 10th, Thompson and Old Doofert, that intersection. And then the intersection of Richmond and Old Doofert. And then we also did require the analysis of Fremont, 197, and Columbia View Drive. In talking with, so we were the ones that, you know, discussed that in the Public Works, myself and the Public Works Director. And then we provided that information to DKS. Those are the intersections that they analyzed. We worked with them on the dispersion, you know, kind of a dispersion rate of breaking that into the percentages of what is estimated. Traffic's gonna, so much of the traffic's gonna go down Richmond Street, so much is gonna go down 10th Street, so much is gonna go down 12th Street. And so then they now analyzed each of those intersections based on that. And then the traffic disperses from there. Once it gets down to Thompson and Old Doofert, you know, it's gonna turn and go west and disperse from there. And then when it gets that Old Doofert and Richmond, it's gonna turn down and go down to the Fremont, 197 intersection and disperse from there. So we didn't have them, you know, extend beyond those areas. That's just those intersections is where the majority or where all the traffic from that development would be going. So I don't know if you want to expand on the analysis that you did at each one of those intersections a little more detail, Lacey?
Yeah, I'll just add a quick clarification that we did do, like Josh mentioned at the beginning, we did do a sensitivity analysis to capture specifically what your concern is, that maybe we missed the peak either because it was January or because it was a different time of day. And we evaluated almost a threefold in traffic volume, an increase of 160%. And the intersection still operated within the city standards. So I don't, I I see your point that maybe the traffic patterns in the Dows don't exactly match what we would normally do in a typical traffic study, but we did do our due diligence to make sure that we accounted for that and show that it still wouldn't change the findings of our traffic study.
It just seemed, when I talked to the developer or the builder, Cameron, before this got too far into this stage, he told us to expect the cords across the street that would actually count traffic over an extended period of time. And that I've never seen. It just, it seems to me to do a thorough traffic study, it needs to be done on more than one afternoon at peak time. I mean, if you did, if you counted traffic during cherry harvest, you'd get way different numbers than what you got on January 9. And if you based your study on that and increased it by 160%, I'm sure that the intersections would be overloaded.
Yes, I can, I can see your concern there, and that's why we we typically analyze a typical typical condition throughout the year. So we're not looking at the worst day when, you know, there's a crash on the interstate and all the traffic is in the city, and we're not designing for that. We're designing for a typical weekday under typical traffic conditions to make sure that that everything operates as it's expected. And we, for a traffic study like this, when we're just looking at a peak hour, we don't do 24-hour tube counts where there would be a tube across the road. We do use video cameras that are mounted at the intersections. And they collect two hours, like we said, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM. And then within that 4:00 to 6:00 PM hour range, we find the highest volumes within those times. And that's what we analyze, and that follows standard best practices for traffic engineering across the country.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect. And I think, thank you for your testimony. We appreciate it. Let's try to afford some, any other folks the opportunity to provide testimony if they'd like. I saw the first hand from Sandra Harris. Sorry, Mr. Masher, I saw you up there, but we'll cover Sandra Harris first. If you'd like to unmute yourself.
Yes, I'm obviously not my wife. I'm living here, I live at 2820 East 10th Street. Straight up, I've only been here since November. Have gotten settled into the community. I do appreciate everything that I'm witnessing and seeing through this process. I haven't heard anything brought up about school. I haven't heard anything brought up about the kids and and how they're dispersed throughout 10th, throughout 12th. It's a really kind of hazardous area when you're getting up at any time during those peak periods for when children are on the, in the system. There's been talk about pedestrian traffic. I sit up on the hill, I can see 10th very clearly. And I can't tell you how many families I see walking, couples, people with their dogs, exercisers, runners, joggers. There's a lot of physical, just pedestrian traffic that I've witnessed. The 97, I think that's been brought up a number of times now. I've got three children. We tell them to avoid 97. 10th grows all the way through town. It's one of the easiest ways to get across into the hub of the the city to the other side of town. I can't even imagine traffic increasing on 10th. Coming down 12th to Thompson, as has been discussed, and Old Doofert, Richmond. Again, where's that traffic going to go? And how is it going to disperse, as the word was used? I I really have to stress the the safety issue and and there isn't anybody, you don't have to be here very long to know that that 97 dispersment is is nerve-wracking. I do appreciate your time. I do appreciate everything that I'm hearing here, and I look forward to continue.
Excuse me, chair, by me?
Yeah. Does he need the name? If you could state your name again, your first and last name. Sorry, I don't think we caught it the first time.
Eddie Harris.
And you got his address, Paula?
2820 East 10th?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. And sorry, Mr. Marash, I mispronounced your last name earlier. I apologize, but I saw your hand raised.
Thank you, not a problem. It's a challenging name to pronounce. So I just wanted to really briefly respond to the engineering issues. Starting with the the critical crash rate, we heard testimony that, well, you know, maybe a different critical crash rate might be more appropriate for this intersection because it's rural or urban or whatnot. But I mean, the TSP, the adopted TSP, has a standard for critical crash rate in it, and this intersection we're talking about, Highway 197 in Fremont, doesn't meet it. And so we think that's enough where this intersection needs to be studied a little further. I also wanted to respond to the issue about the ODOT standard for looking at this intersection. And I guess I'd refer to the the DKS study that says that, ODOT says, you know, you don't have to analyze an intersection if if less than 10% additional traffic is going to be hitting that intersection as a result of your development. And I've got two responses to that. One is if that's the standard the city adopts, then you'll probably never look at the intersection because everybody will come by with these developments. It'll be just, you know, under the 10% threshold, and then the intersection will never be evaluated. But but beyond that, our traffic engineer in in page four of his report points out that ODOT goes on to say, and I'm quoting directly from ODOT's materials, as quoted in our traffic analysis on page four, "No specific formula will result in a sensible study area for all cases based the TIA study area upon the extent of direct impacts of the proposed development on transportation facilities and on areas around the facilities most at risk of failure or unsafe conditions due to the projected traffic impacts." Now, our engineer goes on to say that the City of the Dows TSP provides the best information to identify the facilities most at risk of failure or unsafe conditions due to projected impacts. And in this case, the TSP identifies the Fremont 197 intersection as it's not meeting the critical crash rate. And so for for those reasons, and also because anyone coming from this development that wants to drive on 84 is most likely going to drive through that intersection. We think, and our engineer on page four thinks, that the queuing analysis that was done on that intersection is not enough, and we need a full analysis of that intersection. So that's all I have unless there's questions. I just wanted to respond to the additional traffic information that was added after the record was originally closed. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to provide testimony? I saw a hand raised there, Cameron Curtis. Be sure to unmute yourself and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, my name is Cameron Curtis. I reside at 945 Roberts Drive in Hood River, Oregon. Here with my wife, Emily Curtis. We are the owners of Curtis Homes and the president of Legacy Development. And I just had really a question. I want to be able to put a face to the name as well, but just trying to understand the process a little bit better. It sounds like the opponent has questions about what we're providing and what we're not providing at this point in this in the in the road of the development process. Sounds like a lot of the commissioners had questions about what's been included or not included, and if we should provide more. And I guess I just want clarification maybe from the staff to help us understand as developers developing in the Dows. Is it, is it common at this point to provide fully engineered plans? Or is it rather more common for us to do what we have done, which is provide preliminary plans, get approval, the approval that we get has conditions of approval, and that we must follow those conditions of approval in order to actually obtain the development and and get a final plat and building going forward. And I just wanted clarification maybe from the staff to be able to help us all understand how the process is supposed to be going forward. Thank you, by the way.
Yeah, I can provide some comment. Dawn, senior planner, might be able to help me out some more. At this stage of the development, we re-require preliminary plans. One thing is stated in our code is the reason for doing this and not requiring engineered plans in the beginning is so that the developer does not incur public improvement costs, engineering, surveying, everything that goes into public improvements, providing an engineered set of plans prior to the approval of an application. This could be, you know, speaking on on costs alone, the amount of information to provide engineered plans for a site this large to to foot out that money and then for staff to deny the application. It would be putting a heavy feat on the applicant. But Dawn, could you provide some more if I haven't?
So I think you did hit it. So the way that we have it set up in our code is it's a two-part process. Josh did detail that in the staff report. It talks about a preliminary approval. So we've got the preliminary plat approval, which is what we're gaining, and our staff has already approved, and that's what's being appealed. And it does afford the applicant the opportunity to take that approval and take that next step and start the design work and start the studies and complete those studies and to decide if it's going to be able to work for that site. So those studies and those conditions, so we actually put those studies and those conditions of approval attached to the approval. If they don't meet those conditions, let's say the ADA isn't met, they can't meet the stormwater, then that means that that plat and that subdivision cannot be finalized. So there's been a couple of comments about how do you know? And we want to, we want to know before they proceed. Well, we are giving them a preliminary approval, or we have, and that we condition that all of those requirements be met. So if they're unable to do that, which requires those permits to be installed, to be reviewed by the city engineer, inspected once they're installed as built to be provided to the city engineering department prior to the final plat being signed. So there's some many steps that happen from the time that we give them approval to construction to the actual final plat.
And just for clarification, Dawn, does the approval of the final plat come back to the commission?
It it does not come back to the commission, actually, but we do need signature for the planning commission chair as well as the mayor. And then the county, we also need the county to sign up on the final plat.
Just maybe one more final clarification from from Dawn and Josh and Dale. I appreciate it. Did did we as applicants provide everything that was required from the city and follow the guidelines that you set forth before us for that development?
We felt that we did, and those are the findings that we had provided in the staff report.
Awesome. Thank you guys very much for your help.
All right. Thank you, folks, for providing testimony. I'm gonna open it up to anyone else that would like to provide testimony at this time. If you do, please unmute yourself or wave, make yourself known so you can get our attention. And preferably be, preferably be from someone who hasn't provided testimony yet. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone jump up. Okay. Staff, do you think we need to go through the steps? Or Diana, I should say, do you think we need to go through the steps of any rebuttal from staff?
I would just state, similar to what Josh just stated, that the the question here is whether or not the criterion in the staff report is met, and more specifically, whether or not the application submitted by the applicant satisfies that criterion. That's what I have.
Okay. Okay. So I, we are going to close the hearing again. So the hearing is closed. It's again time for the commissioners to deliberate. So let's have further discussion if you folks wish. I'll open it up. I see Cody's hand there. Go ahead.
Sure. Thanks. It's nice to know exactly what the steps are, and I'm glad, I'm glad Cameron asked the way that he did. But I just want to clarify, and this is a question for staff too, if I can ask it. So this is the only opportunity for public involvement. Like, once we say yes or no, it's it's rolling. Is that correct? And it's, it's all within the city planning department after we make this decision, unless, you know, it's denied and comes back to this decision. Is that correct?
Well, not entirely within the planning department. It will also involve review by Public Works, review by all the franchise utilities. Everything has to, as Dawn mentioned, you know, all this information has to be completely inspected, done to you know, regulations or that final plat will not be signed. You know, ultimately, ultimately, the city has an opportunity. If it's, if information is not provided to us that we are, we are requiring, ultimately, that subdivision will not be signed in.
Sure. So this is, so that, yeah, this is the only opportunity for public involvement, what we're doing right now.
Yeah, apologies. Yeah, I didn't answer your question all the way, so.
No, that's, that's okay. So I mean, after this, I think, I think I'm kind of speaking more on behalf of the public, like is, you know, public, like, is, you know, once we establish a preliminary approval for this, we are trusting that the, that the process is going to be done adequately. Not that we don't trust you, but, you know, just for someone who's wondering what's going to happen, we're just being like, well, I hope this turns out okay. Because, you know, the average person doesn't know the things that go into stormwater engineering. They don't know what goes into ADA sidewalks or what that grade should be. So, does that, does that question make sense? I mean, it's not that we, it's not that we and I and the people don't trust, you know, the process by any means, but that is the case, correct?
Well, Cody, there have been cases where we have, as the planning commission, added conditions of approval that would require it coming to the planning commission. So you can, you can do that.
Okay.
But you don't want to do that all the time. I mean, basically, that's what part of the, the reason for having the conditions of approval. If they meet the conditions of approval, theoretically, it should be satisfactory to us in the end, theoretically.
That's kind of why we were vetting it out right now, hopefully to the fullest extent possible, because none of us are fortune tellers, unfortunately. So we can't, we're not going to know what's going to happen in the future 100%, but the best that we can do right now is to plan, plan for the worst. Is there any other commissioners that would like to have some discussion? Jeff?
I was going to say what Bruce had just said, that we have made a, a condition that we, that comes back before us once the plans are all done. And if we decide to move forward with this today, then I would think that we'd want to do it that way.
I would agree with that. Bruce, did you have any further comment? Okay, seen a head shake. Philip, did you have any input? And remember to unmute yourself.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mark, did you have any comments? Do we still have Mark?
I'm looking. Mark, are you there?
Yeah, yeah, I'm still here.
Did you have any comments?
Oh, no.
Okay. Okay. Well, I mean, it is a tough decision. There's, there's points brought up on both ends. Essentially, what our, what our decision is going to boil down to tonight is if we're going to approve the, or if we're going to make a resolution to deny the appeal, or if we're going to grant the appeal. And if we do grant the appeal, we need to list the specific reasons why it does not meet the criteria. And that's part of the process, you know, once we get these applications, we need to go through ahead of time and, and make sure that we vet through that process. So if we do decide to move towards denial, we need to make sure that it's clear why it's being denied. But if, I would like to state, you know, everyone on all ends of this has done a tremendous amount of work. It's, I really appreciate the amount of effort put into this application. I know that there are some parts that some folks don't feel was vetted hard enough, but there are other parts that, you know, like I said earlier, it's, you can't be a fortune teller with this type of stuff, unfortunately. But hopefully, after tonight, we can come to a resolution that, that we can move forward with. What, what is the consensus of the commission right now? I'd kind of like to get a read.
I guess, this is Mark again. I guess I feel that both because of the stormwater issue and the traffic issue at 197, I, I would probably vote to deny the development at this point. But if these issues could be handled somehow, I, I'd be willing to approve it later, get some later date.
Okay. Is there anything specifically related to the code with, with those intersections that you're referring to?
Well, 197 already has a, you know, higher than acceptable crash rate for urban area. And I think this has to be handled as a urban area, because it's, you know, it's going in that direction, not only with this development, but with the other developments in Columbia Heights and so forth. So I, I think we have to look at this as an urban intersection. The stormwater issue is something I think we need to look at citywide, because we're just dumping more and more pollutants into the streams, which end up in the Columbia River. I think we're heading towards getting shut down by the, by the state if we don't address this. I know it's probably not fair to put this all on, on this one particular developer, but I think until we deal with this issue, and I know it's been a concern of the local watershed council, but we need to address this, I think, before we allow any more large-scale developments of the sort that are going to require additional storm sewers.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to explain their position currently?
Sure, I will. I, I'll just kind of, and I mentioned this at the beginning, I think it's a challenge to try to delineate the traffic impact of this subdivision specifically, and then things that are already happening, whereas maybe adding this, not maybe, but adding this many more people will accentuate those challenges that some of the intersections already have. I, that being said, I do think a better traffic impact study needs to be done. I think it needs to be over the course of days, over the course of the day, during those days, just so that we, just so that we know, but I don't know that that's something that should be put on a developer, that's something cities should just be doing anyway. So I guess I'm kind of still deliberating, but my position is to, my, my current position is to approve this preliminary, but with a condition that we bring this back to the planning commission at some point, you know, at, at some point when, you know, a certain amount of engineering plans are, you know, something is done, just so we can, I guess, just kind of help the community just keep on top of it. I don't, I mean, I, and personally, I'll just say this personally, I have, I'm, I'm for this development. I just want it done right, and a certain amount of transparency that it feels like they don't get through the existing process, but that's the process.
Looks like Josh had some input.
Just, just a quick comment, I may need the city attorney to comment in on this one. Currently, the traffic impact study is a condition of approval. So therefore, if there is any modifications that need to be made to the traffic impact study, is that something that can be made and submitted to us at a later date, similar to the engineered plans that will be submitted to us at a, at a later date, just as they are conditions of approval? So if there's modifications, if there's a more heightened study that the commission would like to see happen, is that something that can be brought to the city engineer's approval at a later date, similar to the plans?
Sure. Alternatively, the condition of approval can, can be amended to reflect the direction of the commission. Does that make sense?
Well, yeah, because currently, I think we have that the developer needs to provide a traffic impact study.
Yes.
So if the developer provides a traffic impact study even down the road, let's say in a month, they would still be able to accomplish their conditions of approval, just like the conditions of approval that they have to meet when they provide us with engineered plans. So that's another thing that if there is adjustments, the commission feels that we need to do more of a study, that's something that can be addressed, and it doesn't ultimately mean that we would deny this application. Does that make sense?
That, that, that does make sense. And that's, I think, what I, what I said, what I'm saying, we're saying the same thing. The conditions of approval can be amended to be consistent with the direction of, of the commission tonight.
That's actually what my question was going to be, is what would, so, and we've talked about it a couple of times throughout the hearing, you know, possibly conditioning that a better traffic impact study be completed. What would that process look like if we did condition that? How would we handle bringing it back to the commission to review that?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
And for the commissioners, if you were to look at your packet beginning on page 32 of your packet, that's where the motions, recommended motions and the conditions of approval, you guys, page 32, 33, and 34. So, from the comments received this evening from both the public and the commissioners, there appear to be some questions regarding the adequacy of the traffic study, and also perhaps there was a question regarding stormwater. Maybe Bill McCabe, our city engineer, can address the stormwater issue. But if we were to look at condition number eight, which refers to the traffic impact study as a condition of approval, this would need to be submitted and reviewed and approved by city staff prior to the recording of the final, final plat. If we could add some language into condition number eight that specifically addresses the intersections that there have been concerns about this evening, that would give staff and, and the applicant and the applicant's traffic engineer direction to refine that traffic study. You could also then add a condition or add another language to that condition that would refer that traffic study back to the planning commission as part of the review of conditions of approval. So if you wanted to, you could bring that traffic study back and see if it was adequately addressed for those concerns that have been addressed this evening. So that's condition number eight on traffic. Now, condition number three.
Well, I guess, if I interrupt you real quick?
Yes.
I was, I was going to ask, for number eight, if we did condition that it came back to the commission, what kind of process would that look like? Would that just be part of this application process, or would it have to be a separate hearing application for those?
It would be part of this process.
It would be part of this process, and I was going to address your, your, your question, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
If you were to turn to page 34 and condition number 23, the way that condition currently reads is all conditions of approval must be reviewed by city staff and city staff and met prior to the signing of the final plat. This condition could be modified to add language that would, staff would report back to the planning commission in open hearing on satisfaction of all the conditions of approval. And so it would not be, the conditions wouldn't be reviewed and, and acknowledged or approved, signed off by staff, but we'd actually want to come back to the planning commission. And with the report back that the condition, that the conditions had been satisfied, you talked about improvement plans, you talked about stormwater, you talked about traffic studies. So there would be a second opportunity for the commission and the public to review the status of those conditions before they're signed off and finally approved and the final approval of, of the plat. So that can be an option for the commission this evening to modify those two conditions.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
I like that solution a lot.
Cody, does condition number eight, how does the language in that sound to you, since you're showing some concern about that?
Um, I think that, I think that, I think the traffic impact study should just be done over a series of days. I mean, is, it's my understanding that the proposed subdivision with the methodology in accordance with the standards, with standards engineering, with standard engineering practices, that the, you know, the, the traffic impact study that we have in front of us in this packet is done to standard engineering practices, and is that correct? The fact, the, the traffic impact study that's in this packet is done to standard engineering practices? I just, I, I personally don't think that that's adequate, and I don't think it's representative of, of this town and in those places. So I would like a, a broader traffic study done with those, with those cables on the road, and I think it's appropriate to have that be done over five days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Thursday through Monday, across the course of the day, and that way we can actually see what the claims really are for this town, because this would be a topic of discussion.
Okay, if that's, this is Dale, just asking a clarification question on that. So when are you proposing that that, those counts be done for another traffic study? Because there's always the possibility that if it's done, you know, say in the next week or the next two weeks, then the claim could be made that it's done during the COVID-19 pandemic, and you're not getting accurate counts for that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, yeah, I definitely see what you're saying there.
That, that may not clear in months or years, that we may be living with that kind of stuff, so.
I think that's something that we have to decide if we're okay with it, if we're okay with that condition now, you know? I, I don't think that January 9th is representative of what's actually, what's actually happening, or what actually happens. I just don't.
Brent, do you, did you guys want Dale to address the storm sewer question or concern that was brought up by Commissioner Popwell?
Um, I think, I think Dale kind of nailed it on the head earlier.
Okay.
With how the whole system was going to work and where it was going to tie into and, and everything. I don't know. All right, go ahead.
I would just add to that comment that there is a public sanitary, or excuse me, a public storm system that can be tied into, that can be extended up and to serve the lot. The development itself always has the ability to look at doing onsite infiltration as well, and putting in things such as drainage soils or bio soils or, or something like that. You know, they would have to do some tests up on the, up on the site, determine, you know, what, how much the site can take, but there is a possibility for them to do that as well, if they're interested in doing that. They're not required to do that, but they, that is an option available to them as well.
And I, you know, I think, looking at that, if we just kind of threw conditions in related to that, unrelated to any code, I don't know if that, that would be defensible. So, does that kind of address some of your concerns, Mark, or answer some of your questions?
Well, partially. I guess I really have a concern over the overall issue of pollution from our, our storm drain system. And I guess we can't require, it's my understanding, we can't require him to put in.
Are you still there?
Drainage soils for, for this one development, since it's not part of the city code.
Right, yeah, well, and I, I don't think that that's something that this individual application can address. I think overall, that, that's, ends up being a city issue. You know, that, that ends up being something that the city needs to address, and I don't think an individual application like this can address that.
And the city has a NPDS permit that we have to apply for and, and abide by every year through DDQ, and that. And that is, is a process that we go through every year to have that valid permit for the city for its discharge. So that's a lot bigger topic and a lot bigger question than just tying that to this single development.
Sounds like a state issue. Okay, was there anything else, Mark?
Uh, no.
Okay. Jeff, did you have any input? We didn't hear, haven't heard from you in a little bit.
True. Everyone else has been talking. I'd like to congratulate the Curtis's on taking a project like this on. Quite large and I think it's quite large for the DOWs. And that's why I think there's so much interest in it, plus in the location that it's sitting and the type of housing that's around it right now. It does seem like they have gone along with what the staff had requested or required of them. And that gets me thinking a little bit about it too. I think we need to, if we move forward with this and not, not if we deny the appeal, that we do need to put conditions on it and, and look at it again, only because it does affect people in the public and such a large area that we need to take a better look at it at that time.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Philip, we haven't heard from you in a little bit either. Did you have anything to add?
No, I don't think so. I appreciated Steve's commentary on ways to, via con, conditions, bring back some of these more challenging points to the commission. And that's something that makes a lot of sense to me. But other than that, no, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Well, and I'm, I'm going to advocate for that as well. If we, I, I know there's been some concerns from the commission and from the public about the TSP primarily. And I think it would be a good idea to get a little more in-depth information as well. So if, it kind of sounds like we're swaying in the direction of approval with conditions to bring it back to the commission to review the TSP that's completed. Am I correct?
Yes, I'm with you.
Okay. If we do that, are there, sorry, go ahead.
You, you keep saying TSP, which is the city's transportation system plan. Or are you meaning that the TIS or the traffic impact study that was completed for the development?
Uh, sorry, yes, thank you Dale for the clarification, the traffic impact study, yeah. So if we do move in that direction, we are either, there's been a couple of options laid out in front of us. We can amend condition number eight to include different language for how that study can be completed. And then also condition twenty-three related to the conditions being reviewed by city staff and changing what the commission. What I'll recommend is if we do change that condition, that we specifically state what conditions the commission would like to review later on. Because although I appreciate the process, I'd like to leave some of the heavy lifting on all, all twenty-six conditions to staff and mainly just put the focus on our concerns on what needs to be reviewed later on. Does anyone disagree with that at all?
I don't disagree with that. Oh, I did notice that Bruce was kind of in and out there for a second, so I don't know if we need to recap it, but I would definitely like to hear from Bruce.
Okay, did you hear that, Bruce?
I'm just catching bits and pieces of it. I got totally cut off, so.
Oh geez, okay. Where'd you get cut off?
About five minutes ago.
Oh geez, okay.
I, I, I'm in favor of not doing, not having all of the conditions come back to the planning commission. I think it should only be the ones that we have questions with.
Okay, do you feel, do you feel that we need to recap the last five minutes or do you feel comfortable moving forward?
I feel, but do we have a motion yet?
Uh, no, we don't.
Okay.
No, we've just been discussing and then Dale just clarified because I kept saying that TSP, he clarified it was the traffic impact study. And we talked about just revising those two conditions to, to meet kind of what we want to see.
That, those should probably be the ones then that we require to come back for the planning commission review.
So just to be clear, everyone's concern is primarily just the traffic impact study or is there something else?
The sidewalks or bike lanes or whatever down Tenth and Twelfth was another concern that hasn't been addressed.
Okay. And did staff have any input on that at this time?
Yeah, I could provide a little bit of input. You know, the, when the, the TSP, the city's transportation system plan was, was evaluated and updated back in 2017, it also did look at pedestrian and bicycle facilities as well. And so there is some segments of that within the TSP such as putting bike lanes on Old Doofur between Fremont and Thompson Street and, or yeah, Fremont and Old Doofur to, to like Thompson. It also had bike lanes going on Thompson Street from Old Doofur up to Nineteenth. And, you know, kind of those areas out there. The, the other streets, it doesn't necessarily be calling for specific bike lanes on. It was having shared bike lanes or with the vehicular traffic and, and shared lanes with that. So there are specific projects within the TSP that got looked at and studied and discussed during that time. And like I said, specific projects that are called out in the TSP for bicycle improvements and pedestrian improvements across the community. And, and then the same goes for the, the intersection of Fremont, one ninety-seven and Columbia View and also some of those other intersections that, that are like one ninety-seven, Highway thirty, one ninety-seven and the eighty-four eastbound off-ramp and one ninety-seven and the Lone Pine Development area. There are specific projects that were looked at in the TSP and evaluated and, and designated in there. And some of those have like either a short-term fix or a mid-range fix or a long-term fix, like tight project and they got costs associated with them and whether they're high priority or not. So I guess that's just something that we need to look at or discuss, what the commission is specifically requiring that they want to see back in the traffic or in this traffic impact study, what they want to have evaluated and studied over, up, above and beyond what we already discussed and talked with and required DKS to do and what's in the TSP.
I, um, I don't see anybody going down to Old Doofur Road. Basically taking that Richmond Hill down to it and having cross-traffic. If you don't stop, you get killed. Going down Tenth or Twelfth is a more likely path for them to ride a bike or walk. And I hadn't heard anything on Tenth or Twelfth as to how people without a car would get through town.
I, I can briefly add on to what Dale was saying about the TSP as well as, there was an argument raised, argument number fifteen that was raised by the appellant. The question was about bicycle improvements. And actually, staff's findings is that the section ten point ten point zero five zero requires on-street bike lanes on new arterial and major collector streets. The streets that we're looking at that are in question, Twelfth Street is a minor collector. Tenth Street and Richmond Street are tenth, excuse me, those are local streets. So therefore bicycle lanes and improvements were not required from the developer.
Right, but Dale was talking about the bike lane on Old Doofur, but nothing on Tenth and Twelfth. And I don't see how you get from this property to the bike lane without going down Richmond or going down Tenth or Twelfth.
Because again, those are local streets, so they would be shared streets. There's not a designated bike lane, it's a shared street.
That would mean pedestrian, bike and car on the street.
Yes, particularly bike and vehicle. Ultimately, it would be the goal to have sidewalks, but, you know, right now we don't have the, the mechanism in place to be able to require sidewalk all the way through there. You know, it was mentioned, I believe by the appellant's attorney, that at some point, you know, possibly an LID would be formed, you know, to get sidewalks all the way through there. But right now, there's, there's nothing in place for getting those sidewalks installed.
Bye, thank you.
All right, thanks folks. Okay. Did I afford all the commissioners opportunity, enough opportunity for a discussion? Does anyone else feel they need to have any further discussion? Or would anyone like to make any motions towards anything?
Do we have a for our conditions of approval? We looked at what the tech changes will be for number eight.
Sorry, Bruce, say that again, you kind of broke up.
Do we have, well, I probably, anyway, so. Do we have any text set out or put together for condition eight if we modify it?
I don't think we do yet. Diana, were you about to chime in?
I know, I think what we were looking for was just specific language about, and Cody started to touch on that, and specific language setting forth what it is that the commission would like to see from the traffic impact study when it comes back.
Okay.
I personally think that we probably are at a point where we ought to have some potential text to use for that.
Right, if we're going to move forward with that, we need to come to a decision on what exactly needs to be included in the traffic impact study or what needs to change within that condition.
Okay, then quick, quick question for the staff is as we make these recommendations this kind of opens up a whole can of worms if we're going to make a new recommendation for what I know that I opened it. If we're going to make new recommendations for the traffic impact study, we have to say what those recommendations, those, what thresholds are and if they need something new beyond those newly established findings based on our new way.
That's, that's kind of my point. I mean, if we don't have that thought through to some extent, it makes it hard to make a decision.
Right.
I agree. To me, it seems honestly too complex to try and come up with that correct language right now on the spot. I don't know where that leaves us, but.
That's what our city attorney was for.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
So what is it, what is, what, okay. What is it that is specific to the traffic study that has been submitted that you find inadequate? Is it the intersections that were studied? Is it the, we have one comment from the commissioner on the, on the time of year, the, the day, the number of days. Do you want new study, new traffic counts on the identified streets over a period of, I heard, five days? Is that something that you find is inadequate at this particular point? Do you find that the methodology is inadequate? Do you find that the intersections, additional intersections need to be studied?
It sounds like it might be all of the above.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think the, what, from what we've heard, it's primarily that it was only, it was only done one day and it was only done for a small period of time.
Two hours.
If it was done over a longer period of time, there'd be more data to go off of. I think that's primarily the concerns, right, Cody?
Yeah, and I, and I hope that those, you know, the, yes, those are my concerns based on, based on what I've heard from other people. And I, I think those concerns are shared intrinsically. So yes, I would, I, to clarify what I said, I think that the identified streets and intersections that have been identified in these, you know, in, in the traffic impact study that, that we're looking at are adequate. I think at any point you could just say, hey, it's this intersection and it's this intersection, it's this intersection. Like you have to draw a line somewhere. So I think these intersections are adequate. I feel that the methodology is inadequate and does not offer enough data, especially local data, to really get a clear picture of what the traffic counts are in this area and, you know, how that, how this subdivision will affect it. So I would like to see an increased number of day, an increased number of days over which this study is done. I think that should be for at least, I mean, if, if the equipment's out there, it should just be done all day. It should just be over a clean five-day period and you can take that data and we can establish where those peaks actually are. And then, and then use that data and decipher it with the same methodology that's in the current traffic impact study. I just think that it's, it's, I think that what we currently have is bad data. I'm fine with how it was deciphered and how it was used. I just don't think it's good data.
May I offer a suggestion, Commissioner and Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Okay, my suggestion would be that our staff, including the planning staff and the city engineer, if we were to have a chance to confer with, with the traffic consultants and we will put an item onto your next meeting on July second and we'll just report back to you as an informational item, Commissioner, on, well, a memo on how the traffic study is going to be modified with the number of days, the counts, et cetera. And we'll put that back on the agenda for July second. And with, with your concurrence, then we'll, we'll go forward and update the traffic study. Rather than try to, at this particular time, try to craft new language for the condition on times and hours and dates for traffic counts, et cetera. So if you could give staff a few days, you know, that, that packet for the next meeting will go out a week from today. So that'll give us a few days to get together, produce a memo, get that in your packet and report back to you as an informational item on the second.
Okay, and would that require us to continue the hearing or?
Yes.
Okay.
And then, and I like that. Thanks, Steve. I, then I think that in addition to that, if we're going to address, you know, so we have, you know, we have that item that we're going to tackle. Do we address item twenty-three on this as well so that we can just, you know, handle this all in the July second meeting and finally get this, excuse me, not finally get this going? handle this all in the July second meeting and finally get this, not finally get this going, but, you know, reach a conclusion to some degree on what's in front of us.
So Cody, you're suggesting that July second, we bring modified language for condition number twenty-three back as well at the, at the same time that we bring a memo concerning condition number eight.
Yes, if that's fine with the other commissioners, I'd like some input on that.
I think it would be, be fair to the applicant, I think, to, to at least get it squared away so they proceed.
That's, yeah, that's.
Would the record stay open?
You, you wouldn't have to. You've got, you've already got the hearing closed.
Okay.
I, I would suggest, go ahead, sorry.
I'm sorry. I agree with a lot of what Cody said, or sure Cody said. However, the other intersections that were talked about, like one ninety-seven, and also, I'm adding to the, you know, creep here, but Dry Hollow and Ninth, where there's a lot of queuing going on even today to make that left turn. And this would affect that because that's where everything drains to as far as, far as vehicles go to get downtown. So I'd be interested to see what effect that would have on that intersection, whether it's a queuing stu- study or a, owes across the road.
Can I, can I comment on that?
Go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, I, I just think at some point you have to, you have to draw a line. And a lot of that traffic from Ninth and Dry Hollow comes from, you know, the middle school area, it comes up from Dry Hollow School, you know, coming down Dry Hollow and traffic that wouldn't.
Right, it's, it's currently a bottleneck and would, this would add to the bottleneck. What, what is that to be? It could be statistic analysis of it. It could, I'm not saying lay the cords across, but what effect might that have on that intersection?
I think it, I think at, at some point it would be hard to say that this subdivision affects this to a quantitative degree. I just, I, I think, I think, I think it's too far away from the subject property to determine quantitatively this is how much this is gonna affect it, because there's so many other external variables that could affect that as well. Yeah, I think it'd be hard to just like eliminate those.
So it kind of sounds like we're moving towards a continuance to July third, is that right? July second, okay. Is that, is that kind of the consensus we're getting from all the commissioners? Mark, we haven't heard from you in a little bit.
Oh, yeah, I'd like to see it continued. I, I don't, I have some problems with, with the traffic study as it is.
Okay. And so that's kind of the consensus we're getting. So do we need a motion if we're gonna move that direction?
You do need a motion and you, regarding closing or leaving the record open, I recommend closing the record. It's been held open since May eighteen.
I would agree with that. I think, I would agree with that. I think any substantial information that we're gonna get, we've already gotten other than our decision, so.
Sorry, got, got it. Are we gonna tackle this item twenty-three before we make any motions? I think that as, when we make this motion to continue, all must be reviewed by city staff and brought to, brought before the planning commission.
I think staff is going to, when we come back on July third, and correct me if I'm wrong, when we come back on July. July second, sorry. When we come back on July second, they'll provide edited versions of condition eight and twenty-three for us to review, correct? Okay.
Thank you.
So if anyone would like to entertain a motion.
Well, I'll motion to close the record.
Okay, and I'll second that. All those in favor, say aye or raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Uh, Mark? You there, Mark? Okay. See, eight, three, one, six.
Yeah, you're starting to break up. I think we're, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Did you vote in favor or in opposition?
Yeah, in favor.
Okay, so.
I think we're losing power. I don't, cause you're starting to break up too.
Okay, Philip, did you vote in favor?
I did.
Okay, so yeah, it was unanimous. Okay, so would anyone like to entertain a motion to continue the hearing to July second?
We are, we do, we have closed the public portion of the hearing, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay. I move, we continue the, the hearing until July second to continue looking at reviewing and modifying, what was it, eight and twenty-three?
Condition eight and twenty-three.
Yeah.
We need a motion to reopen the hearing and continue to July second. We, we had a motion, yeah, so motion reopen the hearing and continue to July second.
I, I assume that that would be part of the, what we would have to do in order to continue the hearing.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion, so table that motion.
You want me to modify it?
Go ahead, Diana.
Yeah, I'm having trouble hearing, I'm sorry. A modification would be good, just modify the motion.
Okay.
I'm trying to adjust my volume here. So we wanna add that we want to reopen during, in order to
Continue to July second.
Okay. You don't want me to say anything about what we're, then?
Bruce, I'm starting to lose you.
Yeah, this is where we'd have Gene Parker draft something for us.
I, I think we're having trouble hearing each other. What we need is a motion to reopen the hearing and continue to July second.
I saw a move, that's what we do.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Okay. Well, we're pushing up close to nine o'clock now.
Well, we don't have to do anything with the resolution.
Right, yeah, there's just that one resolution, correct?
Yeah, and then since we haven't passed anything, so you don't need to do anything with the resolution.
Okay, so we'll move into staff comments.
Well, Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Your next meeting is July second. And for that, for that meeting, we have two items scheduled, now three. Parks Recreation District Master Plan as well as a conditional use permit, so we have those two items. And that concludes the staff comments, Steve.
All right. Are there any commissioner comments or questions? I'm not hearing any. Okay, we'll move to adjourn then and we'll see everyone again on July second.
All right.
All right, folks, thank you to everyone that tuned in. Have a good rest of the night.
Thank you.
Okay, bye.
So I don't need to come down tomorrow, right Paula? I think you're muted. Paula?
Brett, did you want that? Did you need something?
So I don't need to come down tomorrow, right?
I will at some point need to get the minutes signed, but it's been a long week.
Yeah, it was, it was a good night, so. Okay, so how about, would Monday next week work?
Be lovely, thank you.
Okay, perfect.
Do you like me to come out to the county or have?
I'll figure it out. I'll, I'll let you know. I'll most likely just pop down there.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Bye.
Well, take care, folks.